I said the only thing missing was your instructions had construction induction.
Is there some progress?
Yeah.
He's getting some filled.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's time to get our meeting started. I'd like officially call order of the Mass County subdivision business session for Tuesday at eleven twenty. Please try to plead order and ask for a roll call.
Neil Metcalf?
Present.
Neil Clowes? Neil Buchanan?
Here.
Shannon Pennington?
Here.
Doug Prince?
Here.
Mary Iper?
Here.
Rob Farm?
Here.
The record show do have a forum. Mr. Thomas, yeah, without some.
Uh, I just, uh, I just need to amend the agenda tonight. Um, the last item, the adoption of the recommendation for the latest subdivision regulations, we need to take that off the agenda. We're not quite ready. Uh, had something come up at the last minute, so, uh, we'll take that off and we'll re-advertise and repost that when we're ready to do that. So if anybody's here for that item, we're not going to hear that tonight. Um, but obviously welcome to stay, but I'll let y'all know already, get that back on the agenda.
Okay, let's record show then we'll also amend the agenda. And we will probably get the adoption of new land use and some of these regulations. First on our agendas are, um, uh, we'd like to have the approval of the minutes. Everyone should receive their copy of the minutes in the packet for February the twenty first, twenty twenty three. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes that you received? Harry Miller, I suppose.
Motion to approve.
I'm motion approved, the minutes for second.
Thank you.
Motion in second, and go to the discussion. Is now I'll have to talk.
Mary Iper?
Here.
Doug Prince?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Neil Metcalf?
Yes.
Neil Buchanan?
Yes.
Rob Farm?
Yes. Next on the agendas, final subdivision plan for Dove Landing, Phase Four, uh, this is Cloud Silos Court.
Uh, I guess so.
You have a schedule. Uh, this is final phase of Dove Landing. I think there are eighteen lots there. Uh, we made the lot number corrections and added another guy to the maintenance of the detention area on the work session. And, uh, the developer is working on getting his letter of credit through the real apartment. We should have that ready any day. We'd like to try to get the pass contingent on the letter credit.
Uh, why, where's that note about the green space? Did I just miss it?
It's got two assets there, number twenty one.
Yeah, but did it include what about the green space? It doesn't say anything about the green space.
I guess it should be in the deep restrictions who's responsible for the maintenance here.
It should be.
Is that page nine with green space?
Number fourteen, Robert Birch.
Just referring to green space C, is that in this? Okay, that works for me. Um, so signatures and, uh, bond. This is what we need, uh, if y'all want to do, wanted to do a contingent motion upon getting those items before I was sent.
Mr. Thomas, do you have anything else for the work session?
Is it seventeen lots or eighteen lots?
I think it's eighteen.
Statistics say eighteen, but let's see, two hundred to two seventeen. Does that say it?
It says eighteen, if you count two hundred.
Okay. I don't mind you. Okay, that's all I got.
I make a motion that we approve the final subdivision plan for Dove Landing, Phase Four, contingent upon receiving the signature and approval of the law.
Is that, have a motion to approve, or a second motion?
I'll second.
A motion in second, we can vote in discussion.
Neil Metcalf?
Yes.
Neil Buchanan?
Yes.
Doug Prince?
Yes.
Mary Iper?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Rob Farm?
Yes.
Michael?
So next on the agenda, cell tower, five forty five Walter West Road, Walter West Street.
You all should have, have copies of the application and the packet and everything, uh, signage that was placed, the, uh, letters of notification, the advertising and newspaper, y'all should have all that. Somebody here from? Come on up.
Good evening, Chairman, for the record, my name is Russell Brown. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Clark Quinn. Business address is three twenty North Meridian Street, suite eleven hundred in Indianapolis. I'm an attorney licensed in the state of Indiana and also in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Happy to be with you tonight, also Elizabeth Williams, who's a land planner in our office, and, uh, Preston Patton, who's the site acquisition personnel for this. What's before you are just excerpts from our file that I'll reference through our presentation, so I will put them there, uh, for ease of reference as we go through tonight. Uh, the request this evening is for the approval of a three hundred and ten foot, uh, tower, which is three hundred and five foot plus a five foot lightning rod, uh, at the address, uh, right into the record in the, in the area shown in her tab A of the materials that you have. Uh, currently that property, parent parcel is roughly fourteen acres in size, has some residential as well as agricultural structures, utilized residentially and agriculturally. We've used, uh, chosen the proposed location on the property to try to utilize, uh, an existing stand of deciduous trees to try to at least shield the ground mounted equipment for the location, also to try to maximize the setbacks from property lines for this property. So I try to, try to locate it in such a way that we have, uh, large setbacks from all, uh, nearby property lines. This also, um, this location also would be served by a new access drive, so it would not be served by the existing access drive serving of the residential structure.
Excuse me a second.
Uh?
Could you take a second and just explain maybe speak of your concern about the power, explain to them how you choose the location?
It's a very, uh, I can jump forward to my part of, that part of my presentation, but absolutely. So, uh, so what Verizon does and their, uh, how they evaluate their network, is they have RF engineers, I'm not one of them, I'm an attorney, but RF engineers who are evaluating usage patterns in the network, they're looking for holes that exist in the network, whether that's, uh, through high, high areas of use. You think about large gathering places, schools, churches, community parks, recreational areas, along commuting patterns. Uh, and we have seen over the last five years, uh, movements closer and closer into residential areas, where residential areas become concentrated areas of need for wireless coverage. Specifically as you think about, uh, people who work from home, uh, and utilize, um, the internet daily. And, and what thing, there's statistics out there that show that, uh, there are a huge number of households in both Kentucky and across the country where, that are wireless only, that no longer have wire connection. Uh, there are also statistics out there that show, uh, one in five households, their only internet access is through their cell, through their cellphone provider. Uh, so, so as we look at where those holes exist, uh, that's one step in it. Then you look at where other towers already exist and where coverage already exists. So, um, as, as we're looking at those things, you're looking to see if there's a tower or another tall structure in the area that can serve the need already, that you could go on, co-locate on that. First of all, that generally means that I don't have to come see you, uh, we have the, the ability to do it by right. So it cuts out a pretty significant part of, of the licensing or the approvals process. Uh, secondly, it's generally cheaper, right? You don't have to build a brand new structure to go off of, and so, and you can deploy faster. Uh, so Verizon always looks for that as the first opportunity, is there a tower in the area? Here, it's tab C of our materials provides the letter of the RF engineer about what they were looking for, and specifically why they excluded, there's an FM ta, I believe it's an FM tower located north of this site. It's about five hundred foot in, in height, uh, and Verizon did review whether that was available or not. The last, uh, document under tab C is a failing structural report that indicates that as it exists today, it does not meet current structural standards. So to, for any new tower, any new equipment to go on that tower, there would need to be significant upgrades, uh, to the structural integrity of that tower to meet current standards. Doesn't mean it's in danger of falling, but it means it doesn't meet the current standards, those are revised every five to seven years, and the current standards are not met by that tower. Uh, so it's, uh, and the cost to, to improve it, back up just one second, this site has been under consideration for about four years. So this, the first site that was pursued was the existing tower. The determination was made that then the costs to do structural upgrades to that tower were equal to or pretty close to what a new site would, would cost. Um, that was in twenty nineteen, we all know how construction costs have changed since twenty nineteen, so my, I imagine that it would cost significantly more than doing a new site at this point. So the fact that it doesn't pass, then Verizon moved to what we call a raw land site, a site where you're building a new tower, uh, and that's how we've landed in this location. If you look under tab D, that shows the, the existing coverage in this area of the county. If you get into down the southeast part of the county, uh, th- this is the, the before, the proposed site is kind of in the center of the page called Walter, Walter Lakes Road. Uh, so that's the before, you go to the next page and it shows the after, shows, shows the purple area that would be provided coverage from this proposed location. Uh, it's pretty significant as far as geographic area. Uh, what that represents is, uh, enhanced four G coverage. So you have two different types of, of, of coverage needs, you have coverage meaning I can't make a call from there, you have no bars, can't make an even emergency call, or you have capacity needs, which means the AI can get on, at certain times of the day I might get bumped off because there might be, uh, too much traffic, or it might be what we call thr- slow throughput speed. It means it takes twenty, thirty, forty, fifty seconds to send an email, to download an image, to do, you know, things that we all take for granted that we can do on our phone every day. So when you enhance the, the capacity, there's more water in that bucket, there's more ability to get on and off the network faster, and that allows for more users to, uh, utilize that tower, uh, faster and to allow for those who use it to have more reliable coverage. And as, as a regulate, FCC regulated entity, Verizon's obligation is to provide reliable coverage to their, to their customers. Uh, so when they're evaluating, they're looking for those, how do we fill those holes? How do we, uh, provide the best, uh, coverage and capacity for our, for our customers? And then the other thing that we look at when we're building a new structure is how, what co-location opportunities are there? Verizon's not the only carrier in the game, obviously there are other carriers, not everybody is a Verizon customer, but other carriers have needs as well. And so generally the taller a structure is, the more co-location opportunities there are. So a three hundred, a three hundred and five foot tower with Verizon at the three hundred foot center line, you have opportunities for, uh, AT&T or T-Mobile to come in at a lower height, still provide good capacity or coverage upgrades for their customers as well. This tower is designed under current standards so that you could fully load it with those three additional center lines. And not just two, three additional center lines, you have ground space as well for the, the ground space equipment for those, uh, for those future carriers to come on. They do this, that they have co-location agreements across the country, so that's why you don't have, you know, it's not like gas stations where you have one next to another, you have a tower and multi, generally multiple users on one tower because they have that, it's faster to deploy, they can provide the need for their network, and they don't all have to go invest a third of a million or half million dollars to build a new tower.
So you are building a, or constructing it through all additional?
Correct, yeah, so tab, tab B of your ma, of your materials shows the, both the ground equipment space as well as the tower equipment space um, for, for those additional carriers to come in. So you have three, move to three, ground, three, three additional, on the town themselves. So Verizon's, you know, obligation under Kentucky law is to, to consider the likely impact on nearby land uses and values, and determine if there's not a more suitable solution to provide the coverage and capacity objectives. It is our opinion and the evidence we believe is in the record, that this is the most suitable location, a solution to provide those, meet those coverage objectives because co-location is not a, an available opportunity in this area of the community, uh, and the coverage and capacity need does exist. Um, I'm happy to answer any additional questions as you have, but you asked me to jump to the, kind of the end of what would be part of my proposal, just generally a couple other points. This is, uh, has an FAA determination, no hazards, we went through the process of getting FAA approval to build a tower at this height, at this location. It would require lighting in mid-tower and top of tower at three hundred feet, that's a requirement of the FAA. It also has, uh, the Kentucky, uh, we also have Kentucky Airport Plan Commission approval on the site as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you have, but that's, uh, why this location. Uh, other, uh, one other thing, upon completion of construction, uh, this is not a huge traffic generator. So you would have monthly, generally monthly maintenance checks, or when new equipment is going up or down off of the tower. Um, those, when new equipment is going up or down off of the tower, that's generally a box truck or, or smaller. Uh, so it'd be a, a work truck, uh, that would be come out bringing those antennas and someone going up and down the tower. Uh, this is located, can't see it on the overhead, but you can see it in, in A, uh, tab A, there's a green line that kind of bisects the property. Uh, there is an overhead power line that runs, um, on the property there, so we're on the other side of that power line as well. Um, so these are constructed in pieces, you're not bringing in a three hundred foot, uh, piece of steel to come in, uh, and, and build there, so it would be brought in, uh, in, in construction equipment and construction traffic, that would be, uh, not, and we don't believe would be impactful, uh, to the surrounding community, to those neighbors and to the right of way adjacent to the property. With that, I'll finally, I'm really, this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, we're going to incorporate our materials into the record and ask for your favor to vote this evening.
Well, the facility's going to have security, uh, security fence all the way around?
It does, yeah, it's got a six foot, uh, chain link fence with, uh, three strands of barbed wire on the tops, a total height of seven foot. It's, this is also proposed to be surrounded by evergreens, uh, around the outside and the, uh, on the outside of that, to try to provide some shielding from, from get-around equipment.
What's the length, what, what's the start?
Um, I don't know.
Laces implies.
Yeah.
It's a, I mean, it's a conditional, but.
Yeah, so, so generally we're not here.
August or September.
Yeah, so generally we're here six months out or so, uh, it's going to be built in the next construction cycle. Um, so, so Preston's telling me August, September.
Um, I would like for you to just, uh, touch just a little bit more on the, the co-location aspect. Um, are there requirements for, for service providers to? If, in other words, if AT&T comes to you and wants to co-locate on your tower, you, do you have to do that? Or is that, uh, is that a quid pro quo thing, is it, is it, is it law, is it federal law, state law? You all just work together because you want to get along? I mean, if AT&T comes here and wants to build a tower right next to your tower, because you didn't let them get on your tower, it's kind of where I'm driving.
Understood, yeah, so it's not just because we want to get along, um, but it is, i- there's no federal law requirement, generally we are driven to co-location by local regulations. So your, your ordinance which requires us to construct a tower, that's, that allows for co-location, uh, so that's the first thing, is we're, we're complying with that, it would be structurally able to support co-location. Uh, and then secondly is, you don't have to go through this regulatory process, I don't have to come and see you, I generally can go file a building permit, and that's, that's all I got to do. Um, the, the cell business, self-help business is a reactive business, this is not proactive. We are not proactively building a network because we think customers might want it someday. Th- this is about the need that exists now, the demonstrated need, and so this is about deployment. If this is identified as a need and it mi- meets the top twenty-five, fifty sites, a hundred sites, whatever that they're funding this year, it's, how fast can I get it done? Uh, and, and so, speed is another thing that drives that, and they do have national agreements. It generally says if you're going in with this piece of equipment, that costs you X dollars per month. And so there generally is a negotiated, uh, national, um, master licensing agreement or master lease agreement. So the only time that I've not seen that work out is when you have structural issues with an existing tower, and then we're fighting over who's paying for the upgrade. But otherwise, yeah, they've got it pre-negotiated, some people in, on the east coast negotiate that, and when we do the leases, we're told, this is the dollar amount. It starts here, here's what it looks like, here's the form, fill in the blanks, let's go. So, so it is, it is a much faster process, and then the other thing that happens, especially in Indiana and Kentucky, I got to come to you and tell you why I can't go on that tower. If there's a tower next door, I got to be able to come in with a straight face, tell you why I'm not going on it, uh, and that's sometimes the hardest thing, sometimes. But with another national carrier, they have those agreements in place, and it generally is the most faster process.
Uh, one of the concerns has come up in the past, uh, and I've been bothered, one of them personally, uh, is it devalues the property around it? And I've got one three hundred foot, it's three hundred and thirty-five foot, uh, in my house, and I'm guaranteeing it didn't increase the value of my property, according to the BBA office.
So, so I, I, I can give you an Indiana kind of corollary to it, I don't have a corollary Kentucky, Kentucky study. But Indiana, we have done longitudinal studies where we would say, we'll look at a site that, before the tower and after the tower, and we'll look at someplace that doesn't have a tower in close proximity, and do it over a period of five years or ten years. We've never found statistically significant evidence that there's any devaluation. I can tell you, I, I live in a very dense, kind of, I live in former fore Benjamin Harrison, Indianapolis. I wish I had cell towers closer because then I could do in-home wife, in-home, uh, Verizon coverage, I don't have one close enough to me. Uh, and sometimes the reality is that there are some people who make their determination about, do I want to live there by how good my cell coverage is, do I have it or don't have it? And it's not just when I'm standing outside, it's in-building coverage too, that's the next kind of level of it. Do I have to go outside and stand on my front porch with my leg out, uh, to, to make a call? Uh, that's coverage, but is that really what you want and how you want to live life? And the answer to most people is no. Uh, nationally, we do believe that that's, there is a decrease, uh, associated with not having, uh, coverage. Uh, and so I think your, your anecdotal evidence would be prove out kind of what national studies show.
How does the COIC conceit work on that? Is there, obviously you have a lease of the land over, the way this is set up, you all get the income from the tower from these other carriers to use your tower? Or does that transfer to the, to the landowner?
Depends on how the negotiations go, but gener- generally the answer is no, that the tower owner keeps the revenue, the tower owner, not the landlord, but sometimes there is a revenue pass-through.
Essentially a ground lease.
Yeah, it's essentially, yeah, it is a ground lease, it's a long-term ground lease, generally.
That he can sell.
Twenty-five, yes, twenty-five to fifty years, I've been involved in transactions where they monetize, somebody will monetize their ground lease, and they'll take the cash upfront and somebody else will pluck the rent for that period of time, so, yeah.
So this is going to improve, improve the signal in that, in the area around the tower. According to what you said, it looks like it's maybe a farmer raised around the tower.
Yes, s- roughly, so that depends on a couple of things, it depends on topography, obviously you have some topography in this area of the county, um, so you, hilltops, you'll get better coverage than, than valleys do. Uh, depends on foliage, um, so deciduous trees or other evergreen trees around, uh, and then depends on usage patterns, so if you have high traffic, I sixty-five, you know, I seventy, uh, I seventy-five, seventy-four, but those all have much, they, they, they take a lot more water out of the bucket. Uh, than, than if you have heavy users, if you had a school, if you have a school nearby, um, my, my son's a high schooler, and I know there's a lot of data sucked in hi, his high school every, every day by all those kids, but those type of high intensity users, it doesn't go as far. And so you're, you're optimizing the signal based on what those look like, but in this area, you know, it's largely serving, it will serve a bigger area, not as densely populated, but will be impacted by topography probably.
What kind of people in that area expect as far as, uh, how much improvement is going to be, like twenty percent improvement on itself, it's one of your sisters?
I, I'll tell you what we're generally trying to do, we're trying to generally offload twenty to thirty percent off an existing sector, so you have, you know, there's, I'm trying to get too far in the weeds, but you have three sectors by each tower, generally in each section, you, you have so many people that can be covered, there's so much data that can be provided. You're generally trying to decrease twenty to thirty percent of, of the coverage provided by another tower with the addition of a new tower. So, you know, those who are closer are going to likely, will have better coverage, will have better capacity. Um, my guess is that you would have four, steady four G capability, uh, in this location where now you may be still sometimes operating on three G, which is kind of on the phase out, uh, currently.
Is that twenty to thirty for each sector or just the?
Twenty to thirty for each sector is the goal.
Surrounding area will have a better service.
Correct, yeah, yeah, all, not, not just one, but it would be all three sectors, we're trying to offload twenty to thirty percent.
Uh, your utilities, I see that's going to go through a wooded area, are they going to be on poles or underground?
They would be generally, Preston, you know.
Yeah, the utilities are coming in on the existing poles, the, the, uh, the electricity comes right in on the existing pole. So there are. Directly, yeah, I mean, it's, 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 we're going to come straight off the poles, it's already existing there. Uh, there will be fiber run, that will be run along the access road, uh, and that will come in probably later when they get fiber to the area. Uh, that will come in and follow the access existing, when we build the existing, the exact, existing at the time after we build the access road, it'll follow that in underground.
The other thing on this site, they do have emergency generators on site, so, um, those are either diesel fed or natural gas fed, um, but they only run in a sense, they're tested, um, on a frequency ba, frequent basis, but otherwise they only run when power is out to that site, but that does allow them to stay on air.
Naturally, they only, nobody's producing equipment or.
Yeah, yeah, and, and again, after they're up, traffic generation is once a month for some site check to happen.
And there's going to be a, a building on the whole section.
Yeah, they do a shelter, they do a shelter, so the equipment is not directly, uh, the radio equipment isn't directly exposed to. It's a shelter.
Hey, Russell, this, this one's going to be an outdoor platform.
Okay.
So it will not actually be an existing shelter, it'll be a raised platform with a, uh, what they call an ice bridge roof, in case ice comes off the tower and falls, it won't damage the equipment. So it'll be, it'll be a, uh, it'll be exposed equipment, but it's, you know, two by two, uh, boxes that are about four foot tall on a platform. So I think it's two of them on this site, and then they'll come back in and add more later, uh, as the, as the service increases.
Around the top, we have strobe light, black airport.
Yeah, so top is, mine, the top is steady in one, top is strobe, middle is steady, so it's, it's that slow.
No, that's a facility on the ground, would be.
No, if it has anything, it would be in a, like a motion sensor light that would be kind of like above your door, so it would be down, it would be down.
So there's not continued light, you know?
Any other questions? Is, uh, I like recognizing all the offices here to address this issue. Just, please come up here.
Well, um, my name's Nancy Wright, um, I'm here with my husband, Robin. Um, we live at five fifty Walter Lakes Road, so we are directly across the street around the proposed site, so I'm nervous, so you'll have to be with me, so I'll kind of go model through this, but, um, I, uh, got some notes here, and I actually have some handouts too, but I really like their picture that they have up there because, um, um, my husband and, and, and my neighbor are going to talk about some other issues, financial things like that, concern about property values, because that's really scary to me, but I wanted to talk about it from a more personal standpoint because even hearing about it kind of gives me this knot in the pit of my stomach, you know, and I'm, and I'm looking at that picture, and I had some pictures, um, um, what I wanted to explain is, our property across the road is, is ten acres that we bought about a little over twenty years ago. Um, we own half of a pond on the front of the property, our neighbor's on the other half. Um, when we came in, I was in charge of deciding where the house was going to go on just ten acres, and I squeezed it right in the front, right next to this pond. We have like almost no. We have like almost no front yard, it just looks right up to this pond. And the tower is gonna go directly behind the pond from our vantage point, from our viewpoint, so. Um I do have to say that if twenty years ago, I was deciding where to put that house and a big tower like the lovely church you've got right next door, was sitting out there, I wouldn't have put this house there. And I probably wouldn't have bought this property, so. But I, my husband, I was afraid I couldn't visually explain what I think this is gonna, how this is gonna impact us. My husband made handouts, so I wanna give you the handouts, it's similar to that, uh at least the first page is similar to that picture. So that that first page is um obviously similar to what they have there, the Google, Google map picture. You can see more directly that green, the green area that's our pond and where we think that tower's gonna go. Um I I don't know if you can kind of notice from this that there are a lot of houses, kind of, not a lot, cause we live way out in the country. We live in the mountains, but the majority of the houses are right in the area of the tower. There's a lot of uninhabited farmland kind of around there. Um but I I wanted you to look at page two, because that shows where my house is. And it it doesn't show up very well, it's just kind of a little gray box there. Um and then it's at the beginning of that arrow, I don't even know if you can tell, but it's kind of tilted or kind of angled in a certain direction that makes it face that tower location even more.
Your house, you're looking over the pond and over the road to see the tower.
Over the pond.
Across the road.
It's actually across the road, it's actually, that that road is actually what my family calls a pig path.
You know how far it is?
Two hundred and fifty yards.
Yeah, two hundred and forty-four yards. Two hundred and forty-four yards, exactly is what it is, so. Um so yeah, we're we're kind of faced, looking directly at it. Um so yeah, I think we figured that was less than eight of them out. The next picture is a picture of my house. It's there, not to show you what lovely home I have, but to show you that we built this house. There were actually only curtains in in the bedroom of the house, because we're so far out in the country. But we built the house with windows, there was two windows in every room facing out towards this pond. Every single room, the homeless room, the family room, the kitchen, the bedrooms, they all filled with with windows to look out over that pond. And have to say, when we built that, when we built the house, the pond wasn't even full, it was just starting to fill up. It it had just been dug, so it was like getting out of water, but um I had no idea how much I was gonna enjoy looking out over that water. I've never lived on a pond, I've never lived around water, but to see the rain, to see the wind, to see the ice. We have ducks, we have turtles, we have, there's a little island down the middle of that pond. And there's this Canadian geese that have little babies on it every year. Um the sunrise comes over on the east, my sister has actually painted a picture of this pond that hang, that hangs over our fireplace. Because that's how much we've enjoyed it. So um I think the next page shows a, oh no. Page number four. That is a picture out of my kitchen window, those are the panes on my kitchen window. And that's where I spend all my time, I don't know where other people spend most of their time, maybe in front of the bathroom mirror or whatever. But that's right outside my kitchen window, my kitchen sink where I stand. And I feel like that tower is right in my face, the the location is right there in my face. The next picture is, shows my front porch rail, because the front of my house has a little front porch with two rocking chairs that face that exact direction, so. Um There are other pictures of from my neighbor's house, because they're in exactly the same position that we're in. Their houses, they own the other half of the pond, their house is positioned to look out over this pond, so. Um We have invested a lot of money, a lot of time and energy. My husband had fish in that pond before we ever went house out there, he had priorities, so. They um they mow around it, they weed it around it, they make sure there's no slimy scum on it, they stocked with fish. They, we've invested a lot of time and energy in that, so I guess my point is that to look at a three hundred foot cell tower in that spot directly reflecting in that pond is um, you know, it's just not gonna be a pleasant, it's really even the fact that their their idea of co-locating and there's gonna be even more cages around it or that they're gonna plant some trees around the base, there is no amount of fence or trees that's gonna hide a three hundred foot tower from my house, so. So, that being said, obviously we understand the need for in- infrastructure. We're not saying we, you know, we need roads, we need water, we need electricity. Do we need five G or a, you know, super fast cell service? And maybe that's more important to other people than it is to me, cause we've lived out there twenty-five years. Um we built the house, we built the house out there when there was no cell service, so we didn't have cell phones when we built out there. So that wasn't a priority, maybe, it's more of a priority now. It's not gonna benefit everybody, especially at this point. People like us who are locked into AT&T with our work will get no benefit from it at this point, so. Um but, that being said, our our biggest, and our, and the person who, we have nothing, we love our neighbors. We don't have anything against him having a profit of using his property, but his house does not face the tower. His house faces a different direction, so it's not, this is gonna be an issue.
Yes, you're right. On page four, is your mailbox, where's your mailbox at in relation to this picture?
Is what?
Where's your mailbox at on this picture?
No, it's not on that, uh our driveway. Uh, I'm sure you're on here.
It's at the end of the driveway.
It it, our mailbox is down here.
In the driveway.
So this is our driveway, and our little house is right here.
One of the pictures, we have another tower out there.
That's uh. In this direction, is that right?
Yeah, you're.
Is that the tower that you cannot locate on?
Yes.
Yeah.
How long has that CLO tower been there?
Since we lived there, it's been there since we lived there, and um it is, it's. But those flashing lights that they're talking about are strobe lights, and you can see them from my house. And that's why there's curtains on my bedroom windows, not any of the others. But that tower that's seven hundred feet away, those flashing lights shine on, they're intense. So having those even closer is is even more of a concern. But I guess what we were gonna say is, the only issue we have is with the location, we don't have a problem. Yeah, our problem is with that exact location. Um it's frustrating, because we do have another tower so close, we know there's one in the vicinity. Um you can see where it is, it's that five hundred foot tower, uh it's seven hundred and seventy yards. We do wonder how come we're having two towers in such close vicinity to our little tiny neighborhood, we've got two towers. Um when I heard the discussion earlier, I had to wonder if there is not some benefit to these companies for building their own towers, leasing it to the other companies, you know, getting AT&T, you know, that there's not some profit. Because when he mentioned, there is local regulations that say that they have to try and share these towers. And I think that's to protect people from having multiple towers. It's not because the cellphone companies have done that voluntarily and said, oh no, we're gonna be, you know, we're gonna join together. There, the regulations are pushing them to try and share those towers.
Well, I mean, you did hear the attorney talk about trying to get on this other tower.
Well, yes, and my, and here's my thought about that, yes, that other tower's been there a long time. It may not support what they wanna do with all the cages and and that kind of thing. But from what we understood, that tower could be modified so that it could be used, heaven knows or replaced. And I, and I know that modifying something a lot of times can be just as expensive as building new. But people modify things all the time when there's something important that they wanna preserve or something important that, that, something that's important, so if it was important to them to use that tower. Um but if it's, doesn't fit the bottom line, then we'll go over here, we'll we'll build another one and we'll have two towers in the same area. But anyway, um that's um that's my concern, this this other tower. I have to say this, I I have to say that it's it's hard for me to hear that um a billion dollar company is worried about the difference in a little bit of expense of doing something here or doing something there. Because I, you know, I see the profits listed by these companies and, in fact, I see a, you know, I can't believe everything on the internet. But I I note that Verizon had sold eleven thousand of their towers to the American Terror Company, who owns most of the towers in in the United States for five billion dollars, so. See, these towers are an industry of in and of theirselves, they're a business, they're not, you know, a public service corporation, they're not a little mom and pop organization. They're a business and they're looking at this from a business perspective, but we're not. Um we're looking at it as little homeowners and there's a four of us here represented, you know, that are being impacted by this. And so that's why we were happy to get to come here, to at least have somebody hear our voice in this, so.
Hey, would you mind if I asked the lawyer, you can back that up for a question?
Certainly.
Thank you, so quick question on this handout, there's a, the power design page. And it says, the design is inadequate for supporting the proposed impertinence loading and require modifications. The foundation was not checked in lack of geotechnical information, does that mean it's not available? There is no geotech event, or could you go do geotech analysis on that site?
You could go do geotech on that site, no, no, there was no design uh or construction documents for that tower. My guess is that it might be.
Been there so long.
It's been so, been there so long that somebody either doesn't have them or they keep them or whatever.
That tower is that one of the.
Yes, yes.
That tower's owned by the radio station?
Correct.
So, again.
Did you wanna copy for, what she put in the record?
Yeah.
Our concern about the location is, we live way out in the country, we walk Walter Lakes Road. We look out at like the uninhabited farm directly across, I mean, directly adjacent to this farm. You know, the homeowner, I mean, the owner, nobody lives on that farm. He's, his elevation is the same, Verizon contacted him, they never followed up, you know, but so is there truly not any place else that it wouldn't be right in in a homeowner's front yard, basically, so? Um and we don't have a survey team, a group of lawyers. We didn't want to go out and say, no, there's a spot right over here that we've worked with this tower just as well. So Verizon says, oh, we checked and this is the only location, in fact. We we look at the farm that this is being located on, which stretches back several miles and has acreage, you know, in the back and to us. We know that there could be other expenses, you know, you should have to have another easement, you have to build a longer road. Then I heard them mention that this is gonna have an access road off Walter Lakes Road, which I'm telling you is one way over there. Um because it's gonna be close to the road, it's gonna be as close, rather than using the property owner's lane that goes back his, you know, his, his uh property, is that would your lease need to be a little higher if you were gonna use his his lane rather than, and go back further on his property? All those things that are financial, they they don't hold a lot of weight with us, I guess. I mean, I I obviously maybe it has to with this board and um and all, but we're just um the only other thing I was gonna say is, there is another neighborhood not far from us called Heron's Landing. And it's got a beautiful lake and all the homes were designed around this lake and and so they can have this beautiful view and appreciate this view of this lake. I have to say, they don't take care of their lake as well as we take care of our pond, but that's what we did. And and if it is, if this was in their property or two hundred and forty-four yards from their house, you'd have a room full of people here. But it's just a for us, so we're pleading with you to consider our point of view on this, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright.
When I've got to mention this, when I started, uh they have met all the partners, Mass County Department's gross regulation and of the federal people has.
You, everything should be in that application.
Yeah, it's a pretty lengthy application, it goes into great detail of what they're doing, what they're gonna do and uh about co-locating, and uh that's one of the reasons that uh that's one of our regulations, they have proved that they can't co-locate.
Robert, do you know if there's anything in there about any type of big diligence as far as the geotech goes, if that's all that's holding them up? Did they do that, did they look to see?
Uh Burt Mike. Uh but he's a specialist there. I can't say this, my own experience, this tower next to me is three hundred and thirty foot away. Um my ha- I built my house in ninety-four and it was hit three times by lightning. The last time it hit and blew my chimney off the house, brought about sixty-five hundred dollars damage. Since they put that tower there, I have had no lightning strikes whatsoever.
Well, you know.
Now they may have them, but I don't know.
I was gonna say, I read a study that says having a tower close to you increases the number of cloud-to-ground lightning strikes in your area. That's on the internet, though, so you can't believe everything's on the internet.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience? Please write your name and address for it.
My name is Jennifer Onisa Gibson, my husband is here with me, Charles Fennigan Gibson, and we live at five sixty Walter Lakes Road. And we are Mrs. Wright's neighbors that she spoke of several times, we are on the other side of that pond. Our driveway is on the other side going back to the house, and that's where we live. So we are directly across from the proposed location. We oppose the location for the following reasons. Number one, we feel, we feel that they have failed to attempt to find a more suitable location and failure to minimize the negative impacts. If the tower is constructed, every morning, one of the first things I see will be the tower. Anytime I sit on my front porch, I will have full view of this tower. Anytime I work in my flower garden or my husband works in his vegetable garden, we will have full view of this tower. Anytime my grandchildren play in my front yard, there will be the tower. Anytime we drive on our driveway, coming or going, we will have full view of the tower. Anytime we walk outside, walk down our driveway, go for leisurely walks, walk around our pond, there it'll be. And anytime we have friends or relatives come to visit, there will be that tower. We've had numerous parties in our front yard, including a wedding reception for our daughter. We have taken numerous family photos with the pond as the backdrop. Our outdoor life will be totally disrupted, all those possibilities are gone if this tower is built. How would you feel?
Can you see the other tower through the house?
I can't.
And it doesn't necessarily.
It's far enough away that it does not bother me, except there are blinking lights, but this one is right up in our face. KRS one hundred dot ninety-eight sixty-five states in regards to the application, a statement that the application has considered the likely effects of land uses and values and has concluded there is no more suitable location. and values and has concluded there is no more suitable location. Madison County Ordinance number zero three dash zero three C states, the intent of this, to the extent permitted by law, is to minimize the negative effects. We believe the applicant has not considered the likely impacts and has not pursued more suitable locations. The radio tower that you mentioned that we can already see. They may not be able to use that specific tower, that there is plenty of land right beside it. That they could build a new tower and possibly even lease their tower to the coyote. Why was that not considered? Why are we disrupting two sites in such close proximity? There are many nearby hills that have higher elevation than the proposed location. And with, thus would not have negative impacts because they're concealed by trees already. Why aren't they considering that? There are many nearby open fields that are surrounded by mature trees already, have a higher elevation than the proposed location. The fields are concealed from houses and the road. There is even a field on the proposed property owner's own land that is of higher elevation and concealed by trees back off the road. Why didn't they choose that spot? Why are they sticking it right in our face? The application does not address any of these other possibilities. It only states that the Coyote Tower is not structurally sound enough for them. There are many other possibilities they could be considering, but did not address in their application. Reason number two, devaluation of our property. And Mr. Farmer, you mentioned that PVA, it didn't matter on yours? Well, let me state that real estate agents don't use a PVA value when you go to sell your property. They use a certified appraisal. As I mentioned earlier, our family life is gonna be totally disrupted because we will no longer have the use of our front yard. Who wants an outdoor party, or a garden, or play space, or leisurely walk on their own property, or fish from their own pond, all within full view of a three hundred and ten-foot tower? Especially when you know there are other locations all around that could have built it, that are concealed, are mostly concealed from sight, just like that radio tower is right now. KRS point ninety-eight sixty-five states, the applicant is to consider the likely effects of installation on nearby land use and values. Madison County Ordinance zero three zero three C state, the intent of this, to the extent permitted by law, is to minimize the negative effect and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the county. Numerous professional articles exist regarding the devaluation of property that is in close proximity to cell phones. Cell phone towers, excuse me. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, the HUD, classifies cell phone towers as hazards and nuisances. The Journal of Real Estate and Finance state, for properties located within twenty-four hundred feet of a tower, the results reveal declining values up to nine point seven eight percent for homes within tower visibility. And we will be in tower visibility. The Empirical Economics Letter, which is an international peer-reviewed journal, states in a recent study, results suggest that close proximity to a cell tower, and their definition of close proximity is fifteen hundred feet, which we will be if it's constructed, can reduce the selling price up to seven point six percent. The Environmental Health Trust on their webpage states, research indicates that over ninety percent of home buyers and renters are less interested in properties near cell towers and would pay less for the property. Documentation of price drops up to twenty percent have been reported. Same thing at the National Business Post, price drops up to twenty percent. We believe the applicant has not considered nearby land values. We believe the proposed location of a cell tower will nevi- negatively impact our property values, negatively impact our current financial status, and negatively impact the future fin- financial status of our descendants. We have a certified appraisal dated April third, twenty twenty-three. We had that made just two weeks ago. And after construction of the tower, if it is constructed, we will get another appraisal. And so we will be prepared to prove beyond a shadow of a doubt the devaluation of our property, the negative impact that it will make on our financial status, and the negative impact it will make on our future, on our future descendants. Reason number three, health and safety concerns. On the FCC website, under frequently asked questions about the safety of RF emissions, the following statements have been made. Some studies have also examined the possibility of a link between RF exposure and cancer. Reas, this is the important part. Results to date have been inconclusive. They can't state one way or the other whether or not there's an association between RF emissions and cancer. They don't know. It is generally agreed that further research is needed. They continue to monitor the latest experimental findings to confirm the validity of the safety requirements. The American Cancer Society itself states, at this time, there is no strong evidence that exposure to RF waves from the cell phone towers causes any noticeable health effects. However, this does not mean that the RF waves from cell phone towers have been proven to be absolutely safe. Most expert organizations agree that more research is needed. If the tower is built in this location, we will be in constant close proximity to that tower. Neither the FCC nor the American Cancer Society will state that this is safe. The research is inconclusive and more research is needed. A vote of yes on this proposed tower location means that the Planning Commission and Verizon will be forcing us into this further research without our consent. So let me be very clear, we do not consent to being human test subjects for the further research that's needed. We are not asking the Planning Commission to make a scientific decision as to whether the RF emissions will cause cancer. That's not within your purview, Commissioner. However, because the FCC and American Cancer Society both state that studies on RF emissions are inconclusive and further research is needed, and because we will be in close proximity to that tower, we are asking you, the Planning Commission, to obey your own Madison County Ordinance number zero three zero three C in regards to protecting the health and safety. And that is within your purview. I would like to address now something that we have read on the internet regarding exactly what that Kentucky's, the prohibitions to a planning commission. KRS one hundred point nine eight six is the prohibited actions of a planning commission in regulating placement of cell phone antenna towers. We have read that previously, people have claimed that that prevents you from making a decision based on health considerations. But if you will read that KRS, the word health never appears in it. The word is, I will read the statement. In regulating the placement of cellular antenna towers, a planning commission is not to, number one, regulate the placement of a cellular antenna on the basis of environmental effects. If you will just open a dictionary, you will notice that the word environmental and health are very different. Environmental regards the surroundings, whereas health is in regard to human well-being. Your own ordinance in paragraph one states, environmental health, comma, and health and safety. In your own ordinance, you have separated those two terms. The federal government understands the difference between environmental and health. They have the Environmental Protection Agency, separate and apart, independent from the Department of Health and Human Services. Let's just pursue this for a minute. If someone believes that environmental and health are the same thing and you are prohibited from making a decision based on that, let's just go down that bunny hole for a minute.
Excuse me, ma'am, you need to go ahead and wrap this up in case someone else.
I will, in just a minute. You need to be aware that the World Health Organization and the United States government recently, just this last fall, have signed an agreement. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and World Health Organization held the first strategic dialogue convened under the Biden-Harris administration. And the U.S. WHO strategic dialogue provides a platform to maximize the longstanding U.S. government partnership with the WHO to protect and promote the health of all people. So if the KRS is prohibiting you from making a decision based on health, they are violating some of the supreme law of the land, the right to health. So, you can consider that. I have more to say, I will respect your comment, Mr. Farmer, and wrap it up. We are asking you to vote no. We ask it because they have could not considered other options. We are considering devaluation of our property and we consider this a health and safety risk. Thank you.
Okay, in a second. Would you come back and answer some of these questions as you can?
I've got a page full of notes, so I'll try to go through and answer as many of them as I can. If I forget something, no doubt it will remind me of what I forgot. I'll, I'll start by saying this, that in our societies, we have long, uh, understood, tolerated above-ground utility infrastructure. On this very property, there's above-ground utility infrastructure, there's overhead electrical lines on this, on this property. Started with telegraph, telephone, overhead power lines. That is a long part of how we, as a developing country, deliver, uh, utility infrastructure. This is utility infrastructure. It's governed in your state by the PSC. The rate, the citing location is governed by the Public Service Commission. And there are significant regulations related to this, to the delivery of this service. Make no doubt, this is utility infrastructure in our modern society. And we believe that the location of above-ground utility infrastructure, like the wireless communication facility, is considered as part of the orderly development of communities. I can tell you, I've been, I've done this for sixteen years now. This is probably the third or fourth time I've been in a, in a location where a demonstrator, someone in opposition to the petition, already has a tower that they can see from their property and are demonstrating against a new tower. It doesn't happen very often. And part of that is generally, uh, my belief, and I think the belief of others, is that that is part of the acceptance of what goes on around you, that you see it. To the extent there are impacts, you already have a, an existing tower out your front window that could have, if there were, and I'm not agreeing that there are, negative impacts on the value of a home. We think that this is unique, and that you do have one. That's, yes, it's further away. This tower is a pro, is, I don't disagree with the measurement that the demonstrators provided. It's more than five hundred feet, I have a, you know, a radius of five hundred feet from the tower base. Doesn't include their home, it goes, go into their property slightly, but it is more than five hundred feet from their existing location. I don't know that the demonstrators can stand up here and testify that Verizon hasn't exhausted every other opportunity. I think that they're not prepared and not able to do that. One of the things that we didn't talk about when I was talking about citing of a location is, talked about evaluating needs and evaluating traffic and foliage and topography. Well, that creates what we call a search ring. And that is generally a, a pretty limited, uh, area in which a tower can be located to meet the coverage objectives of, of the wireless provider. I can tell you that the property owner to the east, some of the properties referenced by the re, by the demonstrators, uh, had interest in the property, or had interest in having a tower on their site. But it's outside of the area that the RF engineers have been, have determined would meet the coverage objectives for this location. So there, that has been considered, it's been determined that it doesn't meet the coverage objectives. Our obligation as an applicant, as, as mentioned, is to consider the likely impact on nearby land uses and values and not, and conclude that there's not a more suitable solution, which can, can, can consider and meet the coverage capacity objectives by the carrier. You have before you a letter by an RF engineer, there's not an RF engineer here on behalf of the demonstrator stating otherwise. That is the area that Verizon has determined meets that obligation. Frankly, um, you know, one, one of my jobs is, regardless of where I go, there's generally somebody who's going to be impacted. It might not be the folks who are here tonight, but it might be someone further east, further west, or further north of here who can see the tower from their home. So there is no place, that you're putting a three hundred-foot tower that has a lit top and middle that's going to be completely invisible. If it was completely invisible, it's not serving the needs of the carrier. It doesn't meet those coverage objectives. So while it not, might not be their ox that's being gored, I can guarantee that someone else would have similar objections. So there is no place, uh, that you, that you can function. I will frankly agree that real estate appraiser, real estate agents don't go by the, by the property evaluation office. I wish they did, because my, my, my house would be worth a lot more than maybe I could sell it on the open market. But I can also hope you understand that real estate agents are not appraisers. And that, that's a difference to have a real estate agent come and say, well, I think it would be a lower value than what a certified appraiser might be. All of the studies provided, that I'm aware of, uh, first of all, not all of them are, are associated to Kentucky, Indiana, to the Midwest. Many of them are international, uh, in, in their allocation. I don't practice law, I practice law in Indiana and Kentucky. I don't practice law in Israel, I don't practice law in Sweden, I don't practice law in Finland, which are, have very anti-cell phone, uh, studies, very anti-cell phone, uh, st, or the generation of many of, some of those. Uh, Environmental Health Trust is an anti-cell Environmental Health Trust is an anti-cell tower organization. It doesn't discount their evidence, but it does, I want to make sure. And I, I'm standing up here, I'm paid by the cell, cellphone company, so I understand bias as well, but I think it's important that you have that as well. Cell towers, cell phones, I didn't know this until earlier this year, have been around for fifty years. First one introduced in nineteen seventy-three, started to be utilized widely in nineteen seventy-nine. Health concerns are inconclusive. I would expect nothing less from the federal government to say that a study is inconclusive. I would expect nothing less from an organization like the American Cancer Society to hedge their bets. But what they do not say on their site is that there's a direct correlation between cellphone usage, proximating to a cell tower, and any causal connection. Doesn't exist. And I would respectfully disagree with the remonstrator as it relates to what environmental effects means in the K R S citation, as well as what it means under the United States Code. There is well-established case law from a variety of circuits, federal circuits, federal district courts, that the United States Code, the Telecommunications Act prohibits you from considering health impacts in making your determination. I am not your lawyer, but I can guarantee you that that is the advice of municipal lawyers. That is well-settled law, federal law, of the land as it relates to what you can and cannot consider. So I would respectfully disagree that that is outside of, that is within your purview here this evening. I will tell you that I don't say this lightly, and I understand, I understand the emotion of what happens when something is coming into your neighborhood. I sat on a, for zoning appeals for three years while I was in law school, so I heard, I sat on your side of the table. I heard a cell, I heard two cell, cell tower cases when I was sitting on your side of the table. And I heard a lot of the same arguments that were made some sixteen to eighteen years ago. But one of the things that I think is important in real estate law in the United States is the maxim that you buy your home, that you don't buy your view. In, in an effort for to commit, this is, this is the opportunity, to understand why people come in and make those arguments. But what we have, we have ordinances, you have Kentucky statute, you have United States statute that provide how cell tower sighting is supposed to be handled. We believe that we have met those requirements. You have a very detailed application process. The state of Kentucky has a very detailed application process that, that attempts to weed out and make sure that in fact you have considered all available opportunities. You have located it in such a way to minimize the impact on surrounding property owners. And it is our view that, that this location does that. For that reason, we do believe it's ready for your approval tonight. If you have specific questions about other properties that were considered, that's what Preston Patton does. That's how he goes through and works through that process, and he can specifically, there are specific questions about those. But again, if the radio tower was a possibility in twenty nineteen, this site would have been constructed and on air, because we wouldn't have had to come here to, to, to do this. And so we believe, you know, that structural incapability to support it is a practical difficulty that does create a reason why co-location there is not feasible for Verizon or for other carriers going forward.
That's, that's a question I have. I'm glad you brought that up, because I look at this statement here by pod, feasibility structural analysis. And it looks like it kicked that five hundred foot tower out because of the lack of geotechnical information.
No, it's, no, it's the fact that it's, so it's loaded already at a hundred and twenty-six percent of what current standards provide for it. So
So would it not be?
The reason that's in the, the reason that is in the structural is because, is to alert that there was no geotech done. They were able to determine the structural capacity of that site without needing the geotech. That's just a normal thing that they put in there. So they, they, you know, as an engineering firm, they're not going to put together a report that's inaccurate or, you know, could, could cause the issues.
We just need to get him on the record for the minute.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you could just give us your name and your information, so we can make sure we get that in there.
I'm Preston Patton. I'm site acquisition for Verizon Wireless, six ten Copperfield Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee. Anyway, like I was saying, the geotech is something that they don't necessarily need to do a structural report. It's something they put in there to state that struct, that a geotech was not done in the structural report. They were able to determine everything they needed without that, so. Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead, Neil.
I guess one of the questions I have for, you know, I like to see progress, I like to see people who are improving things in our community, but I don't like it at the, at the sake of this situation. It is a utility, whether we want to, we want to say that it is or not. I guess the question I have is how many people are going to be affected positively by this tower being located where it is? Can you, you have a customer base, do you have people that are working from home? Is this going to improve?
Population.
Right.
That's a population of that, of that five.
I'm not discounting what you all are saying. I just want to hear all sides of that.
Sure. I don't know what the exact population is of the area, but I mean, any money.
Not of the area, but I'm like, the impact surrounding the, the tower that is going to improve people working from home, people using a hotspot, people from, you know, I would really like to know that.
So, so what I can, I mean, what I can tell you is I kind of covered my case in chief. This is a reactive business.
Right.
So, so Verizon is not here because they want to spend money at this location. It's because there are customer demands or customer, generally, customer complaints will drive that. They will, they will often then also look at where you have existing customers. And, and I wish I could tell you, because it'll make my job easier, that it's, it's three hundred customers who are going to be better served by this. I, I've asked for it for sixteen years, I'm not going to get it. It's proprietary information, they won't give it to me. But it, it is about serving either existing customers, potential customers. So existing customers would be, I have a mobile only service, but they consider me to be a potential Verizon home customer if I had more reliable five G service. And, and that would be a potential customer, given that there are some residential clusters nearby. I would anticipate that there are cluster of users who are in some of those, there was a reference to a neighborhood nearby, you know, that surrounds, surrounds a lake. I think that's a little bit further to the, to the west, but there are, you know, those types of residential users. The other things that, and I don't have that here, but it's cert, it's utilized by public safety personnel. And so the, the enhanced access to public safety personnel, in cab coverage, fire departments, for sheriffs, police, constables, to have that in cup, in, in cab coverage enhancement is a public safety need. You don't have a bunch of, of state roads, state routes that are covered by this proposed location. There are kind of some to the north end, but generally, you know, we provide the data that it is, I was going to find the exact number. Seventy percent of nine one one calls come from, from a wireless service. So that enhanced E nine one one capability. So those are all things that may not benefit, you know, five hundred customers, but have it public at large.
Well, the point of contention in counties has been accurate service, either work from home or solid Wi-Fi service, or whether fiber is going to get to wherever. And that's just been a constant conversation. I moved here ten years ago, moved back here. And it has improved, but we're nowhere near where we should be. But, and you know, if you look at this application and what they've put in, and how many towers, they're actually just in the county alone, with the influx being close to the interstate, you've got a lot of rural areas of the county that are not speaking service. And hey, this is where it's at.
But are you, are you asking, are you asking?
Uh, can you touch on, you know, the, well, sort of the concern that Ray earlier, we could have showed this side.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Comments are made about there, but I mean, what, what criteria do you guys follow or do you go through when you do two six?
Sure, sure. So, so we get, like he said, a search ring, and that search ring can generally be within, you know, like, it can be as tight as a quarter of a mile, up to a mile. I believe, if I remember correctly, this one was a, was a half a mile search ring. What I do is I locate property that has power on it, has enough room to put a tower on it and not, you know, interfere with any structures. I look for, for property that has direct access to the main road. We don't want to use a, a easement on another piece of property. Those are almost impossible to get, you know, get an easement from one landowner for the tower or another landowner for property. So when, what I do is initially I get that search ring, I locate the properties. At that point, I send out letters to landowners that I drive the search ring and look at everything. Then I send out letters to the landowners who, who I think their property would, would work for the, for the tower, for zoning and all that stuff. And then whoever calls me back, that's what I consider candidate. Then I go out and I meet with them, I do a report on their property. Verizon requires me to turn in at least three candidates, so they've got options, so we can look at the best option for Verizon. The first candidate was candidate A, was that tower. That's actually where the search ring was pinpointed, was on that tower. So when I see that, that tells me R F knows this tower is here, and that's the tower they want. We pursued that tower first, this is back in twenty nineteen, pursued that tower first. We got the structural back, catastrophic failure, hundred and twenty-six percent with our equipment on there. And at that point Verizon said, you know, at this point, we need to, we need to look at another option. So I went back and actually spoke with Mr. and Mrs. Lakes, who, that tower's on their property. So I actually, one of my candidates was a, was on their property about, I'd say about three or four hundred feet from that tower. So that was, that was my candidate B. After the tower fell through, we went, I went back to Mr. and Mrs. Lakes, had them review the lease. Mr. Lakes was pretty ill at the time. But sorry, getting sidetracked. Anyway, ended up, the site went on hold, then it came back off hold, at which point I contacted the Lakes again. At this point, they were no longer interested. They just said they didn't want to, they didn't want to really deal with it. The next candidate was Mr. Baker. So that was, that was, that's why we ended up at Mr. Baker's property. I sent out letters to every, every landowner with, in the search ring that had, you know, a large enough track, it wasn't just a small track with a house on it. And I had four, four responses. And it was Mr. Mathis, Mathis Farms, that was too far out of the ring. Mr. Baker, the Lakes, and the tower. So those are my four, four candidates. Verizon's R F made the decision after the tower was done. The Baker candidate was the only other candidate that would actually work for them that was still interested, so.
People owned the radio tower, and they, they were out of the question.
What's that now? Sorry.
People that owned the radio tower, and they were out of the question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And they owned, they owned the vast majority of that search ring, too. So they, they owned quite a, you know, a few hundred acres.
And you said they were not interested?
They were not interested. They were initially, and then, and then after we, we had to take a break and, and the site was put on hold. Then when I came back, they, they just, I think due to his illness, they probably just weren't interested, and that's what we.
I will say this, when they put the tower next, close to my house, I have the same terms they have. I bet my house was two and four and ninety-four. I think they put the tower in, and it is twenty-ten or twenty-twelve. And twenty-sixteen, I had appraisal done on my house. And it increased about a hundred thousand dollars. So I don't think the tower's going to put the Navy in the surrounding property. This tower sits right beside, so it'll be eight, it's probably a, what, worth thirty-house subdivision or something?
Probably, right.
And I think every lot in that subdivision is sold, except one, as you go in. And I think that's just about the price. So it hasn't hindered anybody building new homes in there. They, they're probably two hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollar homes.
And I, I've got an anecdote. I've had many a landowners that I go out there and meet with, and they, they ask me, well, what is this thing going to look like, you know, once it's out here? And I'll tell them, right up the road here, if you drive, you know, three miles up the road, there's a tower right there outside of the road. They've never even seen it, right there. You don't notice it until it starts getting brought up. And I understand where y'all are, I understand where you're coming from, I promise you.
There is no way, you all have a tower right here next to you to build then?
We can't, Rob, we can't do this. We can't do the back and forth.
I don't know, as far as what the tower's going to look like, the tower behind my house is a, looks like the Oppo Tower.
Okay, this, this is a three-leg self-support, there'll be no guide wires, there's nothing outside of the hundred by hundred compound. So the, all the equipment in the base will be screened by trees. And there will be no guide towers. There will be a self-support probably, which is what you've got.
You have a maintenance contractor that comes by and logs.
Yes, that, yes, right, yes. They, they, they keep everything pruned, everything sprayed on the ground, all that kind of stuff. They spray around it, they do all that stuff, so. Anyway, any.
You talked about four different lots that you said were possibilities.
Sure, sure.
And that this is the only one that is left.
Yes.
So if we tell you no, you're just going to go away and they're never going to get into the tower out there?
Oh, I'll have, they'll, I'll have to redesign the search ring. And more than likely, what they do usually when this happens is they'll split a search ring, and they'll need two towers to fill in the one spot.
That, that's very likely what will happen, is there, there will be. Probably be back here twice instead of once. Might get, might get to, to another county with that split, but and, and that's part of the goal of why that search ring is important, because the goal is to not build more towers. The goal is to build only the amount of towers necessary. And by locating it within the search ring, that allows you to offload, to meet the coverage needs that are, have been identified with one tower. And it's also why the height is important, too. So sometimes we'll go into communities and say, well, if you could take it to over ninety-nine feet, you know, what would that mean? It often doesn't meet the coverage objectives and would often result in the same thing, with one ring with, with two towers.
And we have no way that we can know how many people live in this about five mile radius. Nobody has any of that information?
I mean, I imagine we could probably look at the county, county G I S, figure that out.
P B A office. Okay? Any other question, anyone has any other question? Is anyone else in the audience that could, uh, I want to comment, so we have time for one more.
And you're going to bring the advocate back up to, there to get the last word.
Can you say your name and address directly?
Robin Wright. Five fifty Walter Lake Road. Nancy's husband, two hundred and forty-four yards from the proposed site. I am, if I may present, I've got a petition from all of the contiguous owners around the the site there, one hundred percent opposed to the, opposed to this tower being built in this location. Every contiguous owner. And think about, think about what we just learned, planning commission. We're the, we're the location of last resort. Unacceptable. Unacceptable. As I said, my name's Robin Wright. And I thank you for the opportunity to present this information in opposition to the construction of the Walter Lake Road cell project tonight. I work as an environmental safety and health manager for the city of Lexington. My daily job requires me to read and interpret law, develop health and safety programs to protect employees, and maintain the appropriate regulatory compliance documentation. I also provide environmental health and safety guidance to our capital, capital projects construction section. Appreciate the work that you do on this, on this commission. I was a member of the Fayette County Emergency Planning Board for over twenty years. I chaired the board for six years. I know how difficult it is to try to comply with all the local, state, federal regulations and still get things done. I've been, I've been there. We, we do appreciate your service with the commission. The meeting tonight is a great example of why this commission is needed. Tonight, you're hearing from your own Madison County citizens that need your action. Tonight, we're discussing an out-of-state corporation which neglected to do the legwork of finding an appropriate location for a cell tower. Tonight, we're discussing an out-of-state corporation which neglected to do the legwork of finding an appropriate location for a cell tower. Instead, they're proposing a location that will hurt my family and my neighbor's quality of life and financial stability by proposing to build a tower in the middle of our neighborhood. Uh, there's, there is ample sparsely or uninhabited land all around the proposed, proposed site. If you would, if it would assist you in decision, in your decision-making process, Nancy and I, and I'm sure the Gibsons, sincerely welcome each of you to come out to our home, this property to help you understand why we're so upset about this proposed, proposed intrusion into our life. Uh, please don't think we're just an old naysayers. Nancy and I are, are in full support of improving the living and business conditions in our county. We support the Madison County Comprehensive Plan. We look forward to the day that we have strong cell service, fiber internet, and a sanitary sewer waste system. Can't wait, love to have it. However, as you've heard tonight, this current proposal for a cell tower is not acceptable. It's two hundred and forty-four yards from our front porch and visible from everywhere. Uh, we cannot imagine how bright the flashing lights would be at night. I would like to speak about three important applicant, application issues that I consider non-compliant with Kentucky state regulations. These issues make it appear that the applicant didn't try very hard to comply with the state requirements. Uh, I request the committee consider these as you decide to approve or disapprove this project. Um, I think, and we think, these issues are so serious uh, that they would establish grounds for retaining counsel and referring this matter to a court of competent jurisdiction if we're not successful at the planning council level. We sincerely hope that's not the, that's not necessary. Number one, after receiving our registered letter, we, we processed an open records request for the applicant's information file. Received it within a few days and immediately looked through it to see what rationale the applicant had used to select the five thirty-five Walter Lakes Road site. I was surprised when I did not find a land use and property value statement demonstrating that the applicant had considered the likely effects on near, nearby land uses as required by Kentucky statute. Uh, there was no mention of other sites visited and considered, no mention of potential damage to property values from constructing the tower among our home, houses. Uh, the applicant's letter of need had a few sentences that discussed the inability to co-locate the equipment. Therefore, we as property owners have no way of knowing the process or decisions that were made to bring this ill-conceived product proposal to our front porches. I think this failure to include a use and value statement is statutorily non-compliant and should prevent this pro, proposals from further con, consideration. Number two, uh, also, state statute requires that applicants demonstrate at a minimum that each person who owns property contiguous or within five hundred feet uh, to the property upon which the construction is proposed and rece, has received notice of the proposed construction. Uh, the applicant's five hundred feet radius and a butter's map did not include one property owner that lives within the five hundred foot radius. When the property owner was visited and asked to sign our cell tower opposition petition, uh, they informed us that they did not receive a letter, they did not know the project was being proposed. Failure to notify this property owner is statutorily non-compliant and would have prevented them from attending this hearing if they had so desired. I think this failure to notify should prevent this project from further consideration. For number three, I'd like to just refer you to our picture packet there. Uh, page nine, please, page nine, picture of our pond uh, that Nancy talked about. And if you look on the backside of the pond, you know, you'll see that twelve to eighteen inch strip of land sticking up above the water. Well, that's our pond dam. That's our pond dam back there. And you don't know what I'm getting ready to talk about? Because they missed it. They didn't put it in their, their site development plan. Okay, so you don't, you, this is really important and it didn't make their, their plan. Uh, page ten, please, is a picture of our pond dam going, going east, going toward urban. Now, that picture, it, it uh, it's not, I don't know why it turned out so flat, because that is a steep dam and it's hard for a sixty-one-year-old man with a weed to stand on it. Okay, so it doesn't look too, too steep, uh, but it is steep. Page eleven is pa, pond dam going west, that's uh, back out toward Gun Bottom Road. Uh, and you'll barely see my, my car fender right there. That is, uh, that's very close to where the proposed tower's driveway will be. You know, right there by the, by the pond dam. Okay, so there's uh, you know, there's the issue. And just think about, that's a one-acre pond. The end, at the deep end of the pond is there where this uh, driveway is gonna go. Think about twenty-four feet deep, how much water weight is pressing against that dam? Okay, number three, state statutes require the applicant to prepare a site development plan including all elements and existing structures within two hundred feet of the access drive, including the intersection with the public street system. The existing, okay, the existing earthen dam that I just explained to you stands less than a hundred feet from the proposed access drive. It was not included on plan as an existing structure. This earthen dam is constructed with heavily compacted clay and soil. It bears a massive amount of water weight. The dam could possibly be damaged or fail during construction operations that cause ground vibrations. Ground vibrations can be caused by rock blasting, hole ramming, drilling. The complete failure of the dam could cause an immediate life safety risk to any workers close to the dam and to vehicles traveling on Walter Lake Road. The failure of this dam would also pose a great legal and financial liability to the Madison County government. Repairing the dam, replacing a section of Walter Lakes Road and repairing the severe gully erosion on the adjoining farm would be very expensive. To comply with state statutes, this high-risk structure should have been included and taken into consideration on the site development plan. If this construction were to ever occur, the planning commission will need to require the applicant to provide Madison County and the dam owners liability and financial protection for any damages to the dam and any damage caused by construction-related, construction-related dam failure. Now, you know, in closing, I feel certain that in the hundreds and probably thousands of acres of sparsely or uninhabited land in the Walter Lake Road proximity, a cell utility could find an appropriate tower site that's not located within one hundred feet from a sensitive existing earthen dam. Planning committee members, thank you for the opportunity to present this information tonight to you on the proposed tower. And sincerely ask you to consider all you've heard and disapprove of the project. Uh, hopefully, the applicant will try again and will find an acceptable site for a cell tower and will help provide better phone service in Waco for decades into the future. Thank you.
Question, was that damn building, maybe tell me that? Is this a part of the town you?
Uh, you, the easement is fifteen feet from the center of the road, so.
I'm talking about the, the telephone line that's got poles setting the dam.
Oh.
Or setting the edge of the dam.
Uh, now, is it, is it?
Maybe, maybe they were there before the pond was built.
Oh, sure, yes.
Yeah, the telephone poles.
Divisional Water maintains a list of high-risk dams, I think. Is this on that list, you know?
No, it is not.
Who says that?
Okay, we. I do.
If you're gonna respond to that, you've gotta be up at the microphone.
I'm Chuck Gibson. I live at five sixty Walter Lakes Road. I work for the Natural Resources Conservation Service for over, well, counting post-retirement, I've got over forty-three years in. That dam does not meet the criteria for a higher hazard dam according to divisional water regulations. It is not twenty-five feet from the top of the dam to the toe of the dam. It's a structure that Kent Clark let get built right beside the road and did not require Delmer Rose to follow any standards and specs when he built it. So, in my opinion. It's pre-existing, but in my estimation, the county's partially responsible because they didn't require Delmer to follow USDA standards and specs for pond construction. But now, in relation to the road, how many of y'all are familiar with Walter Lakes Road? It's very narrow and where they're wanting to put their access road off of the road is in that low spot. And when you're coming eastbound on Walter Lakes away from Gun Bottom, you come off that level area and drop down and you're right on top of that entrance. Now, maybe following construction, there won't be a lot of traffic there, but I can see a lot of issues with safety in that particular area during construction with traffic. And then, is this tower gonna come in, be put up piece by piece onsite, or is it gonna come in in sections? And how long are the sections gonna be? Because if you come in from Gun Bottom Road, you've got the right-hand turn or left-hand turn there at Gun Bottom, which is basically ninety degrees. And then out there at the Old Lake Store, you've got another ninety-degree turn. And then around there at Chase Cooper's, another ninety-degree turn. And some semis can make it, but a lot of them can't. And you can tell that by looking at the road at Chase Cooper's, where they've been hauling cedar logs out, they're just destroying the road.
Yeah.
So, I'm concerned about the road and I'm concerned about the erosion off their access road because they're going straight up the hill with it, going by their draw.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Is attorney still here? Could you come up and uh, as far as uh, road damage? Are they required to come up along or down?
No, they're required to have.
Other side's trucks.
They're required to have an encroachment permit through the county road department.
So they, they approved this, they approved that?
They'll approve, they'll approve the entrance if they haven't already done it.
And we haven't filed it. Mine, I have no, no permits have been filed because.
Yeah, I gave somebody in your organization. I spoke to, yeah, I spoke to, yeah, I spoke to him. And he said after the planning is when we, when we would come and apply for the.
Right.
Encroach, when he said as long as we did not uh, interfere with his drainage, uh, that we would, uh, that we were good, so. But he's still gotta review the, the, the paperwork.
And so is in the uh, safety concern, we all put a placard on the road to like caution, construction going on or something?
I'm sure we can, yeah.
Traffic.
Sure, yeah, I'm, I'm sure they'll do that. I mean, I can, I can definitely make sure they do that.
Is it gonna be built onsite or be pieces gonna be brought?
It will be brought in on the truck. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be in, I think the sections are twenty-foot sections. So it'll be brought in on, on trucks, twenty-foot sections. They'll build the access road first. Once the access road is complete, then they'll bring the equipment in and build, build the tower.
I guess the weight of that, of all the pieces wouldn't be as heavy as a concrete truck.
No, 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 these are aluminum. The, the towers are built out of, I guess they're built out of steel, but yeah, they're not, they're not as heavy as concrete, concrete trucks, no. So.
Or is it accurate that they did not include one of the landowners? Do we know that?
Not to my. So we have, the, the way that we do notice, is there is, you know, we generate a site survey, it's part of, part of your application requirement, we have to provide how we've done the research, who we've provided notice to. Um, so, you know, there are, uh, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There are ten unique property owners to, to our owners, to, to the records that we have.
And that's what's on this list, so I'm not seeing that somebody wasn't identified.
It could be a tenant, it could be a, a, a renter, it could be, uh, they're required to go by the PVA's record of who the property owners are.
And, and we send them certified and not, the hard way, not everybody wants to go sign for a certified letter. The general think it's coming from an attorney, um, so, uh, they don't wanna sign for it, but.
You're not.
This one, they, they are. But often, often that's what happens, is they don't put two and two, well, they didn't get notice of it. You know, you, you had a certified letter that was returned and never accepted, and, and that could be the situation. We don't have all the green cards back yet, so not all of them have been accepted, so that, I, I don't know the circumstance. That's the first time I heard.
And requirements, not that they be accepted, requirement, they, they, you can't make somebody sign for a letter or go pick up a letter or.
And we're arguing with the PSC about that very thing. You can't make somebody accept it unless you make me hire a process server to go deliver it to somebody. I can't make somebody accept, accept something. Can, can I, I think there's probably two things that I, I'll ask for monitress, if you're okay, and I'll, I'll sit down.
Uh, quickly, we have.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. Um, this is not the location of last resort. This isn't like what, you know, I, I, that was referred to by one of the remonstrators, that this is a location of last resort. This is a location within a defined area that meets the coverage objectives of Verizon. If this was a location of last resort, we would not be here. We would not be building a tower that doesn't meet the objective, coverage objective needed here. Heard lots of flashing lights. There is not a white strobe that is part of this. The, the FAA regulations have changed in recent years. New towers, constant flashing, they're red, they're not the blinking white lights that I remember as a kid driving down, looking at radio towers that were that high. And we do believe that the use and value statement is included in the RF engineer, that someone qualified who's evaluated the need of this location, that's included in our materials. We believe that statutorily sufficient to support your approval with that. Happy to answer questions, happy to sit down, what's your vote?
Question, uh, can that light be directed up or out?
I think those lights are required by the FAA and there's, they're, and their intensity are, are regulated by the, by the.
I'll make a motion that we approve this uh, cell tower location. Uh, they have met all of our requirements, uh, with the payment commission as required by us, and uh, I think they have proven that they tried to relocate again. And I think the need for this uh, improvement in the cell phone service in that area is needed. And uh, my commission is that we approve this application. Kind of second, my motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and second, and further discussion. About what we have to vote.
Mary Iper?
No.
Neil Metcalf?
No.
Billy Cannon?
No.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Robert Carr?
Yes. That makes it a tie.
Uh, that's thirty-three, yeah. Jeeble, you wanna give us some guidance on that?
Uh, this is not, this is not like zoning, this is a decision the planning commission has to make. I'm sorry, Jeeble, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I can't hear you either.
This is not like zoning where you're not making a recommendation, you're making a decision, so a, a, a tie would be considerable. It, it's not approved if it's a tie, so. But what you're required to do under the statute is to uh, give a notice of approval or disapproval and basis for that, so.
Uh, we could table it until we got.
Table it till you have an odd number.
Seventh member.
Uh, that's what I would suggest, uh, because you do have, you do have an obligation under the statute. If it's disapproved, you have the, the, you know, the grounds for that. If it's approved, you have to give notification in sixty days. So if you do table, it's gonna need to be on the. So, if you do table it, it's gonna need to be on the next agenda. And, uh, and of course it'd be, it'd be also y'all's decision whether or not to take more evidence or to let, I guess in this case, be the member who's not here, uh, review the amendments and the reporting in the meeting and make a decision based on that if he chooses to do that or something. So, that's, that's the best direction I can give.
If we do, uh, table it, uh, you wouldn't be required to listen to any more...
You're not, you're not required to. You can make a choice whether or not to look, to have, have more, more evidence or to, or table it for more discussion, then you could have more discussion and, and vote on it again. But you'd have to vote on, table it as well. You are going to be in a position to approve it based or disapprove it based on, uh, yeah, and, and give the grounds for that to the act. Should I make the motion?
I'll make a, I'll, I'll make a motion. I will form another motion.
I'm gonna play it. Motion to table it till our next meeting at the end of the, what, next month?
He has a three to three tie. It's a refusal. That's it. So, you already refused that.
Sir, we've had, we've had advice from our counsel. He represents the planning commission. He's the planning commission's attorney, so we're gonna take his advice, okay? Thank you.
It's inappropriate to table it now.
I second that we, that we table it.
I have a motion to table it. Second, a motion to table it, second, and for discussion. If not, we'll have a vote.
Neil Metcalf?
No. I don't wanna table. Is that what you're voting for?
Yes, yes. Bill Buchanan?
Yes.
Shannon Cankin?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Mary Iper?
Yes.
Robert Palmer?
Yes.
Okay.
Robert, let's take a five-minute recess here. Let everybody stretch their legs a little bit. Uh, note back if they need to. We'll, we'll be in recess until seven-thirty.
Stretch your legs, I guess.
So, our local reg, the statute requires... Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I guess our regs would say a tie is... It does say, you know, the statute of rules says the board shall prove... Unless our run is other back, our meeting will say something different. Instead of putting in a road to it, they can go into Baker's Drive, or something with the order adjustments. And it's a high supply. There wasn't any more directions, so... Tybo is whatever you decide to type.
Thank you for that talk.
KRS, we love you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
It's a vote to disapprove, a vote to disapprove, so a tie vote if it's zoning, you know?
Well, y'all picked a bad night to be in. Y'all picked a bad night to be in.
Without a recommendation under the statute. But in this case...
This would mean I wouldn't wanna be on, on that table if I were making that decision.
Could have, you know, we could have... For planning commission.
Hi, Mary.
What's doing here?
Uh, you'll find out here a little bit. We're...
Y'all sleeping out about, about, about North Richmond, are you guys? Do you have a baby? How do you have sweet sets in your backyard?
That's my, that's Brad's. They adopted a kid, and they, they adopted a kid, and, uh...
I never even saw it till today. I go by it, and I'm like, sweet, he didn't have a baby, and nobody told me.
I'm off the lake, who we have started having babies?
So, so they adopted, and that's, well, good, good for them, good for them.
Of course, uh, you know, Ronnie moved, and it was the late autumn, and she's got kids, so they got, they all, all kinds of kids around there.
It looks like, it's wild that I, I just like, since today was the first time. Every time the bypass, they seem...
One I had was, they were three.
Looking different, different.
Are they going to, uh, you kinda know what's going on. Are they gonna put a stop sign down there?
I think we all would just drive as fast as we can, and we're just for the best. I have no idea.
You ain't heard nothing?
I have no idea.
That was a four... It was a weird set of service, like, maybe three people upstairs, if we saw it.
Yeah.
Because the statute says you have to approve this route. I, I, I don't think you can...
Oh, I think I might have talked to you on the phone. Neil Metcalf, you do build properties yourself?
Yeah, I'm Steve Jones. Yeah, good to put a name, a face with a name and everything. Yeah, we talk about some property and stuff there, you know? So, we bought our, we able to buy that from our mom, you know, that land contract. But, uh, but yeah, it's a, I, I, I said it, I thought about that, I'm like, I know him. Yeah, I know who you are.
That's right, I've talked with you many times.
Yeah, yep. But, uh, you've been, uh, staying busy.
I guess that's what you do, make the ass. Did that one fellow ever sell his property over there by the, uh, by the tractor plates and all that? Did he ever sell that over there?
The land, yes.
He did that, was able to sell it?
Yeah. He sold it to a guy that's building that building, right next to it. The guy ended up expanding onto that side.
Right, right. Yeah, well, he was kinda walking, didn't he, while you were with that guy?
I think he was, but... This coach that owns that lot next to the one that we had.
Right.
I mean, he did some sort of workout. It's basically the guy that's no tenant in the building, in the tractor.
Right.
That's building there. And so, he did some sort of renovating. Kind of deal, like this guy built on that site, do what he was doing, and then he wanted to add space to it, so he did.
Well, it, uh, that worked out for him, that, that's what I did, don't you? I'm sure that guy charged you good for it, though, didn't he? He wanted a good joke flash.
Yeah, I don't know what he ended up, so I, I think it was after I had the list out, he would do it.
But, uh, yeah, it's, uh, we was able to get that from our mom. That was a kind of bad week there. He finally got her. My sister was kinda, just told all this a little bit on that stuff, so we was able to come to the agreement. Yeah, we got... They, they even lawn around. Sure ain't.
No, there's just nobody building anything right now. That's the hard thing, is that, oh, really, cost, and, yeah, yeah.
Well, we was lucky to do what we done. We faithful. We was able to get her to do something, my sister. A great deal.
Yeah.
Anyway, Neil, I thought I'd introduce myself. Appreciate you. All right, Robert, let's go. Neil Metcalf?
Here.
Bill Buchanan? Shannon Cankin?
Here.
Doug Fritz?
Here.
Mary Iper?
Here.
Robert Palmer?
Here. Next on our agenda is zone change, thirty-five seventy, wherever you want. Bert, was, um, pump notification been made on?
Yeah, sign's been on property for a couple of weeks. Certified mail letters went out, and I have tied it in the newsbook.
First of all, I gotta change my bullet point notes there. It says good afternoon. Uh, my name is Jerry Gilbert. I live here in Richmond on Vernon Court, uh, resident in Kansas County, Ohio. Visiting, so, you know, originally from Brea. I'm a real good Richmond practice law, uh, globally for the last forty-one and a half years. Appreciate the opportunity to come to the meeting today and represent, uh, Thelma Brown, who is the executor of the estate of Thelma Brown. Name of the property at the, um, address there on Brea Road. Most of y'all are familiar with that location. It's a, a little six-acre tract that is adjacent to the Dollar General store that's gone in there. This property is currently, uh, zoned UC one. Actually, Ms. Brown?
Hi, yes.
It's currently zoned, uh, UC one, which is residential. And the request is to change that zoning to UC four, which is general business. There's the, there's the current zoning map, uh, which we provided in our application. It shows, uh, UC one there, the yellow area, uh, red area to the south. Our proposal is to change this to UC four, which is general business. Property to the south, you'll see there is, is, is a commercial area. Immediately adjacent to it is the Dollar General store. And you'll see, uh, just south of that has been a longstanding commercial area. When I grew up, it was a bluegrass truck stop. Remember that with the big bull out front, in the car on top of the, and a bottle of tea on top of the building. Uh, but it, it is a collection of, of businesses now. I think there's a fence store there. There's an auction, um, house there. Uh, there is a used car lot across the road. Uh, so it is, it, it is a adjacent to that, uh, commercial district. On the future land use map, uh, this, um, uh, property is designated as a commercial, uh, provided the, the future land use map with our application. Uh, there is sewer, water, electric utilities are available with property. And as we know, is located on Arterial Road, US twenty-five south. More commonly known in my childhood as the Dixie Highway, uh, before they had I-75. So, um, as the comprehensive plan envisions, um, a U-four zoning classification for the property would encourage, uh, infield development, uh, near the existing development, so... We are here, uh, tonight to request the, the zone change. And, uh, we believe that, uh, changing the zone to commercial would be in agreement with the comprehensive plan as adopted by, uh, proposed by this body and adopted by the fiscal court. We have, um, um, Ms. Brown is, is here. Um, I don't think that, uh, other than she has a proposed buyer for the property.
Right.
You're not gonna present any testimony or evidence?
No, I don't think so.
Do I need to? I don't need, no.
All right. Oh, um, she does have a potential buyer that's here. It's, uh, uh, David and Steve Jones. They have operated a heating and air conditioning business right down the road, uh, located at thirty-eleven, uh, Brea Road. Familiar with that, uh, that property and that business, uh, they've been in business... Dad has been in business, uh, for a long time, and the brothers have been in business. Their current location is located on a half-acre lot. Um, so, a- as their business has expanded in the last few years, they're looking for, for other sites, and this, this property became available. They don't have any immediate development plans for the property, um, but they would like to acquire the property. Future expansion if necessary. Obviously, this is a six and a half acre lot.
Is a condition of purchase? You wanna walk in this street?
It is a condition of the purchase. I can answer any questions.
So, can I ask that Bert confirm for, for the record, the applicant's statement on the house made? And that's a post-finding that, um, the comprehensive plan, this is an area that is designated for commercial use on the future.
Uh, this area is within the urban corridor, uh, is adjacent to a state federal highway. Uh, it is contiguous with other properties that have been or are zoned for commercial activity.
So, if, so if, if the board wanted to support that finding, you, you was, that statement is accurate?
That would, that, that would be my statement on the property, yeah. I, I noticed there weren't any proposed findings in here. Jerry, did you have anything, uh, that you wanted to add for, for evidence for the planning commission to work out?
No, just...
Other than it is, you, you, your statement, it is in keeping with the comprehensive...
It is in agreement. The post-finding would be that it is, it is in agreement with the comprehensive plan.
Any questions, any questions? Makes anyone in the audience here to give this language change? I think there's no one here to see the commission, so if no other questions, you can press.
I make the motion that we approve the zone change for, uh, thirty-five seventy, Brea Road, Bridge of Kentucky, four oh four seven five, from UC one to UC four, deciding to find the fact that it is located, uh, on the US twenty-five as one of the main transportation corridors in the county. Also is adjacent to other, uh, commercial property, and that it is in a general standing for commercially, uh, industrial business, things like that.
Construction ready. Open to view or structure issue?
Then we have a motion to approve. Mr. Stevens, the motion. I have a motion and second, and for discussion. And we'll have a vote.
Mary Iper?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Neil Metcalf?
Yes.
Bill Buchanan?
Yes.
Shannon Cankin?
Yes.
Robert Palmer?
Yes. It'll be the, it'll be the recommendation of this commission, uh, that Phil Ford approves the conference challenge. Uh, they will have two, uh, here in Charlotte.
Put those question marks out there.
I'll be sparring it.
Yeah.
It'll be our recommendation.
That's right.
Is there any good feedback coming out?
That's all we've got tonight.
Second.
Neil Metcalf?
Yes.
Bill Buchanan?
Yes.
Shannon Cankin? Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Mary Iper?
Yes.
Robert Palmer?